Okay, now I got it.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, cool. I had my, my computer on council mode, which is silent, which is probably a good thing for a counselor.
Yeah, we kind of like it that way, Tim, but.
The quieter the better, that's, that's my motto.
Yep.
Okay, sorry for the delay. We called the main order. Janet, you want to do a roll call?
Oh, well.
Thanks.
Yep. Clark Costello. David Johnson.
I'm here, I'm here.
Are you here? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I'm one of the Janet Murphys tonight.
Okay, and there's a lot on the screen, I can't tell which one.
I have a lot of Janet Murphys.
Yeah, I know, way too many. Jay Crissell. Anthony, I know, said he wasn't going to be here. Matthew Kloski. Richard. I see Bill. He's got Bill. I see Tim, Mitch.
Yes, I'm here.
Sam Sharma. And John.
Yep.
You have a quorum.
Oh, good. Okay, let's start with public participation. Is there any public on? I don't see any.
No.
Not seen any, so there probably no participation from them that's not there. So we move on to new business. First, do you have Lockton?
Um, yeah, it's got the number three, the minutes, approving the minutes from the last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We, we had Janet sent out the minutes for last meeting. Anyone take, have a chance to take a look at them?
Yes.
Any corrections? Amendments?
Not for me.
An motion in order to accept them?
I moved to accept the minutes as provided.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, minutes passed. Sorry about that. Now we can go to 5A of Lockton.
Okay, so Tori, are you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, would you like me to share my screen?
Um, I can do it.
Oh, you can? Okay.
Yeah, I just can't get my video to go with the screen sharing, so I had to pick one or the other.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, so hi, everyone. My name is Tori Perigini. I have sat on one of these calls before, but I think this is my first time actually presenting to you all. So I'll be reviewing our current year-to-date experience for Newington on both the town and board of education side. So first thing first, we have our experience detail tab. This is the overview of the combined town and board plans. Year-to-date, you guys are running very well. As you can see in the right-hand side of the graph are accrual versus actual loss ratio. We're looking at a growth loss ratio of seventy-nine point nine a net loss ratio, I'm sorry, and then a growth loss ratio of seventy-eight point eight percent. So again, this is running very favorably. We want that number to be as close to one hundred percent as possible. And another metric that you want to compare that against is the total dollar amount below accrual. So on the gross basis, we are running at eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars under that accrual, that total rates times enrollment. On the net basis, once we remove the claims over ISL, that year-to-date variance increases to just under a million dollars, but nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars through October. If we compare that to last year, we ended on a net basis in, in that surplus, so we had five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars below that accrual rate for our total plan cost. That prior policy finished at ninety-five point eight percent. If we now dig into the town and board of education individual pieces, which pages, we'll start with the town side. So the town loss ratio is seventy point nine percent through October. This is both on a net and gross basis. There are no claims that have hit the ISL threshold for the town plan. The year-to-date variance for the plan through October is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in comparison to how we finished last year. We finished with two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars above the accrual rate on the net basis, or comparing that to our loss ratio of one hundred and six point three percent. So we are starting in a much more favorable position right now through October than we finished last year. One thing I do want to kind of point out, though, is that it's historical. That the plan year starts out really favorable, and then we start to increase as we get more of those ISL claims built into the later half of the plan year.
What is the individual limit? Can you remind me of that, please?
The individual limit off the top of my head, I believe it's two hundred thousand, one seventy-five.
It's one seventy-five.
Okay, any questions before we move on to the board side? All right, moving on. So the board makes up for a larger portion of this overall group, so this, this plan definitely has more of a heavy hand on, playing into our overall loss ratio. So this plan is running at an eighty-three point zero percent loss ratio through October on that gross basis. Once we take out that stop-loss reimbursement, we're at eighty-one point five percent. So this plan does see a small stop-loss reimbursement currently through October. And we'll dig into that detail once we get to that high claimant page. But essentially, this plan has six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars accrued and total plan cost under that accrual. So we're running really well, and that's a very similar story to last year as well. We finished the plan year at ninety-two point oh percent with seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars variance between the accrual and the total plan cost. Both plans are running really favorable right now. We will keep an eye on the high claimant activity for this COE plan as we move throughout the plan year. Any questions before we move into the high claimant information? All right, moving on.
Any more questions? Okay, good.
Okay, so the last page of the cost report that we will be reviewing is high claimant information. So as we mentioned a few moments ago, the ISL threshold is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We are tracking anything here above fifty thousand dollars. This way, we can track any claimants that are starting to accrue claims that may breach the ISL threshold later in the plan year. So there's only one claimant right now that has hit that one seventy-five. We're seeing about a fifty thousand dollar ISL reimbursement for that employee. And that employee is active with stomach cancer, as you can see from the diagnosis. We have a couple other cancers in these diagnoses as we move through those nine claimants. And then the under spondylopathies, that diagnosis is for age-related wear and tear of the spinal cord. So that should not be an ongoing diagnosis as long as they receive that treatment for that, for that diagnosis. And going forward, it should not be as severe. So overall, with this whole picture that we just went through, like I said, the plan is running really well. This is good news for us as we start to put together our projections. So once we have one additional month of data through November, I will start to put together this projection. I'll start to look at how we expect the plan year to finish out and how we expect the renewal to impact this projection. And then once we get data through December, we can really finalize that projection and start to get to a more firm number of how we want to set that budget.
This is based on a calendar year, correct?
So the budget will be based on rolling twelve period. That's our best indicator, but if we use December, that will be a full calendar year.
Okay.
Can I just make one request? Is there any way to get this information even a little bit in advance of the, of this meeting?
I do, I do have it, Bill, and, and next this is Janet. I will send it out to you early. I just got it this morning. I wasn't in the office on Friday.
Great, thanks. Even, even that advance is great.
Yeah, next, next meeting, I'll try to make sure that you guys get it before.
Thank you.
Okay.
So there are no other questions on how you guys are running your good date. I think I will send it back to Lisa and Dave to take it away with the next steps.
Okay.
Dave, did you have anything to add? I did not.
No, I don't have anything new. Like, I think Tori covered everything as far as, the only thing we're working on is we're keeping an eye on the large losses, and we're looking for additional information before we do a final budget projection for next year. But right now, everything's looking positive.
And I know that we have set in the calendar the initial budget projection call and presentation on January eighteenth of the town and the board.
Okay.
Uh, Dave, or just a quick question. Last time, last time we met, we talked about a few large losses that come through and causing some distortion for the town. Do you have any updates on those?
Just that they're, they're not on, they're not showing up right now.
Right, yeah.
Oh, so.
I saw that, but, yeah, okay.
I mean, the update is, uh, we, we have, we're not seeing them yet. Um, our, our stop-loss unit still thinks there's some. So we had our stop-loss folks look at the, look at it. They still think that there's a risk that there's going to be some. But they, I don't have anything more than what we have right now, so I'm not looking for problems, John. If, um, if I can get them to come in with a reasonable renewal on this, then, then great. We, you know, but we're going to market this, this year again anyway, so we'll have competitive bidding on the stop-loss. Uh, and go after every dollar. We're not looking to bring their, bring attention onto anything. If they're not bringing it up, we're not going to.
Right, okay, thanks.
Hey, Dave, what are you seeing as a reasonable renewal?
Unfortunately, stop-loss is no, is, is a little crazy right now. Um, we're seeing minimum increases of fifteen percent, and a lot of them are in the, in the twenties, thirties. Anthem lost a bunch of money on their stop-loss over the last two years. So they've pulled the pricing out of Connecticut, and they're doing a centralized pricing structure. I believe it's based in Indianapolis. Um, so they're getting a little tighter. So that's one of the reasons why we're guaranteeing a marketing this year. We want to be able to pull in competitive bids to use that to drive Anthem to the lowest possible number. This might be the year we end up carving it out of Anthem if they're not reasonable. Um, we'd prefer not to because we get immediate reimbursement if we bundle it all. Whereas we have to, you'd have to make sure that the claims are filed and, and, and get, in order to get the reimbursement. And there's some delay between when the claim is filed and when it's paid. Right now, as soon as it hits the one seventy-five, you're, you stop paying. So that's a major advantage. We don't, we don't like to give away. But, um, bottom line is, we want to make sure we're not overpaying for the protection. But the short answer to your question is fifteen percent is usually the starting point.
For a reasonable. When you market, you're going to look at different, uh, different limits as well, right? Just going up a little bit?
Yeah, we won't be able to go down, but we'll look at two hundred.
Down would be more expensive, so that probably wouldn't make sense.
They don't, it'll be way more expensive because as soon as you go down, they think that they, you know something, and the pricing gets, uh, they, they load the pricing. Um, we can look at two hundred if we need to. Hopefully, the, ideally, we find something at the ones, because you're, based on your size, one seventy-five, two hundred is pretty much the highest we would recommend. From a protection standpoint. Um, but we'll look at both. Anybody else have any questions or follow-up? Okay. Janet, I think we're done.
I think one of the Janet Murphys wants to talk.
Got his hand up, but I don't know, we, we can't hear him.
He's having problems with his audio, it seems like.
Okay, I'm back.
Did you have a question, Tim?
No, I didn't.
I think, I think Clark does.
I just kept it out there for a minute.
Can, can you type it in, or?
If you email me, Clark, I can see it. I've got my emails open, Janet.
Nobody can read lips?
Can you do like Bob Dylan or write it on cards and just hold the cards up?
We can send a carrier pigeon.
Oh, no, I can't see that.
I will, I can't read the rest.
I'll write later, I think it says.
Okay, okay. I can follow up and get answers for you later if you send it to me, Clark.
Thanks. You aren't being held hostage, Clark, are you?
Well, you're throwing in the send help.
Yeah, send help.
All right, so I guess that's the, the rundown is, um, you're running okay now. Uh, hopefully, it stays that way. We are concerned about the stop-loss. Minimums are fifteen, but it's not unusual to see higher. And we're going to be doing a full marketing to make sure that we're in the best position, uh, price versus value. And budgets will be done, uh, in, we'll be working on them as we go along. And January, I guess, is the, is the target to have a firm number.
Okay. Any other questions for, for Dave or Lockton?
Yeah, I do have one question, Dave. On the stop-loss, have you, um, I work with this in, in my regular line of work on the, on the vendor side, and it's in a little bit of a bigger space, but have you seen fee holidays, Clark? Because I know a lot of the carriers are not really into mitigating their fee increases because if you just give a lower increase, that can potentially just set you up for more trouble down the road. But I have seen a lot of, and, and obtained a lot of fee holidays for almost like a cash equivalent of what the increase would be, but it's applied towards the upcoming policy year. Is that something you guys have marketed or suggested received?
When you say fees, are you talking about admin fees? Are you talking about?
Talking about the stop-loss fees for the, for the coverage. In lieu of, like, they say, well, we still need the fifteen percent, but we'll give you X thousands of dollars in the beginning of the plan year to offset that. But then you're still at the higher PPM rate going forward, but you still kind of gain some relief for the current plan year.
Talking about like a premium drag?
I'm talking about rate, January first, you get fifty thousand bucks, and I'm throwing a number out, actually probably like ten thousand based on this. But your increase is still twenty percent. But if you equate the two out through the course of twenty-three, your net increase would be like fifteen. That's what, I could explain it. I, I just, it sounds like maybe you haven't dealt with them, or maybe you have, and we're just using a different term. I don't know.
Might be a different term. I mean, it's, the only reason for that is that they think that they want, um, on some larger accounts. They do that because they have minimum premium requirements, and it's the only way to get, get it through underwriting. So on larger trigger points.
Yeah, we're kind of talking the same thing, and it may be, and yeah, it is an underwriting thing because just you don't want to set yourself back on the, on the PPM rate as, as a vendor. So you still do relief, but it's not in the form of the actual PPM fee. It's just like, like a cash payout in the beginning of it, i.e. a fee holiday. I, that's not something that gets done down in this space. That's cool. I was just wondering if that was thought about as well.
Yeah, it's the, we've done those on large ones or cases that have like a half a million or a million dollar trigger. Uh, very often, like, if you have a five hundred or six hundred thousand dollar, um, stop-loss trigger, the premiums can get pretty low. Uh, and then in order to get it through underwriting, they need to have a, meet the minimum premium level, and then you get the credits. To, so you're actually paying less, but it shows on their books that you're paying the full premium amount.
And that isn't anthem-specific? That's through the industry?
I haven't seen Anthem do it, but I don't have a ton of large cases with Anthem. Um, the, I've got one with a three hundred thousand dollar spec. We've been able to negotiate the number down to a reasonable number to begin with. But they've been bumping up against minimum premium levels at three hundred thousand. Um, so it's, it's something that I'm sure our stop-loss unit has done nationally. Uh, I just haven't run into it as a need to, a needed solution from my block.
Thanks.
We've been pretty, pretty, um, consistently beating ten percent a year. On, uh, last year, I think it was, it was, it was a pretty aggressive stop-loss number that we got, I want to say, oh, I'd have to look it up, but I'm pretty sure it was single digits the last couple of years. It didn't have a significant large loss um, that they were worried about this year, but they found it after we had already negotiated the deal. So that's what we're kind of worried about right now.
Any other questions? So we're all set?
Yeah, I think we're all set with Lockton, Tim.
Okay.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Having some computer, some computer issues here, coming in and out, so, great, move to U S UBS.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think this is the biggest group we've had in three years, so welcome, everybody. What we're going to do is go over the markets, if that's okay. Please make it collegial if you have questions as we're talking. Please chime in, and we'll go over the performance. Uh, we do have an asset allocation study also. If we have time for it, we'd like to go through that with our changes to the portfolio. So any questions before we get started? Or observations? Okay, David, you want to kick it off on page three? Yep, page three.
Sure, thanks. Next, Mark. Um, so this page, we've been putting up to illustrate, um, when we think about this calendar year, two thousand and twenty-two, from a portfolio perspective, I think everyone, you know, realizes that the stock market has had, had its challenges this year, but what isn't as apparent is portfolios across the board, whether they're aggressive or conservative, have all had uh, double-digit losses, and that's represented in the blue bars. So the, so on the left-hand side is a fully diversified stock portfolio, and all the way to the right is a hundred percent bonds represented by intermediate-term bonds. And you can see that there's not a huge disparity between the, the returns, minus twenty-four versus at best minus fifteen from when this was published in late October. And, and that has, that's the differentiator this year. It's been a very painful year for conservative investors. And it has been historic from that perspective. Bonds have had their worst drawdown in history. And, you know, really, it's because of the dramatic reversal in interest rates. And when interest rates goes, it go up, bond prices, um, move in the inverse direction.
So when you look at this page and it talks about the bonds, you can see there's very little difference between a hundred percent stocks and a hundred percent bond returns, twenty-four versus eighteen percent. The key thing to look at with the bonds is, prior to this year, the most, this, these bond indexes include the aggregate, which means there's corporate bonds included also, and government bonds. But we just break out the US Treasury bond. The thirty-year Treasury historically has never been down more than, uh, single digits in its lifetime. This year, at one point, the thirty-year Treasury was down over thirty percent, which is what's driving these negative eighteen percent rate of return across the index. The other thing to keep in mind is, we taking a look at, and everybody, anybody who has a 401K or a 403B, you know what target date funds are, and the target date funds that are in the twenty-twenty-five year are supposed to be very conservative. At one point about three weeks ago, the most conservative target date fund for somebody who's in retirement or near retirement was down twenty-six percent to show you the impact of the bonds for this year. So keep that in mind as we go through this stuff. Any questions on that?
So, um, and this page also here puts it into perspective, um, uh, what's happened with interest rates this year. So the red box shows you, uh, the Federal Reserve, what they've done this year, and the dotted line is just a projection of what the market thinks they're going to continue to do. And the slope of the line is much steeper than previous years, so you're, you're looking at going from zero to over four percent in less than a year. And just compare that to the last time the Fed hiked rates, which was at the bottom. That's the, the goldish line. It, that one, starting in two thousand and fifteen, took three years to get over two percent. So, you know, the financial tightening that comes from uh, rising interest rates affects asset prices, affects bonds, stocks, real estate. It impacts the economy, and this, this just shows how dramatic, historically speaking, this year has been because of the pace of going from zero to over four percent in less than a year.
So the thing we like to point out on this page is, we talk about black swan events. A lot of people think that the term black swan has been around for decades. When in reality, a gentleman, Mr. Talib, created it in two thousand and seven, and then in two thousand and eight, we had the first black swan, and his prediction was, once in a business cycle, once in a lifetime, you've had a black swan. If you look at the last six months right now, we're operating with between four and five black swans at once. Everything from Russia, Ukraine, to the food insecurity, to the interest rates, to the inflation, geopolitical events, and even the politics in the United States right now. But when we sat around and thought about this, the impact on Newington's portfolio, the impact on everyone on this phone who's any kind of business personalized, as we turned it on its head, and we're now looking back and saying the last ten years in particular, but the last ten to fifteen years has been one long white swan. And by that, I mean the central banks, or our Fed in particular, in our lives, has kept interest rates near zero. So there's a concept of cost of money. When you go to build something or buy it or inventory it, it costs money to have it sit on the shelf. If you have a loan now, it costs money to make it, uh, to pay that loan back. But for the last ten years, at near zero cost of money, that meant almost nothing at that point. So if you're operating a company, you're operating at one to three percent maybe borrowings of money. If you and I went to go buy a car or home, you could get a mortgage at three percent in the past few years, or past year in particular. And that's not that much money to carry. And if you have inventory and put it on the shelf at zero, near zero percent, it doesn't mean much. And it also gave rise to things like cryptocurrency in our mind. Because if you put money into the money market, you were making point zero one or point zero five, but if you went into cryptocurrency, not because you didn't believe in the US dollar, the Japanese yen, that was in another, um, asset class that was going up. Now it means something, and for insurance companies in particular, considering you guys are close to Hartford, insurance companies were struggling to make the bogey because rates were so low. Now there's a real cost of money of four percent. Um, if you buy something, if you're operating a business, if you have to carry inventory, it's going to cost you four to eleven percent to operate. So we came up with another term. If you remember, in a lot of meetings in the past ten years, we used the term Tina in the meetings. There is no alternative. You had to own stocks. Now we're using a term called Tara. There are real alternatives. You can go into a four percent money market. You can buy bonds at five percent and limit your risk, and we'll talk about that in the portfolio. Any questions on that? Make any sense? Okay. And just real quickly, the other thing I, I'll point out, when we look at the market, the two other things that we look at now is, we're very concerned that sixty percent of all Americans are living paycheck to paycheck right now, which is a big number. Which is a big number, but the inverse, the forty percent of individuals in this country are sitting on a trillion dollars plus. Of money markets and checking accounts and cash, which the interest rates so far haven't destroyed that wealth. So that to get the slowdown, you have to kind of get that out of the way. And you throw in that private equity and venture capital pools, both are sitting on a trillion dollars plus. And that's causing a lot of volatility whenever there's a potential bargain or the depressed what's going on. The markets go up or down real quickly. So we still have a lot of capital out there ready to be put to work and that's representative, not just of the US. But the global economy as well. There's lots of cash still floating around, just sitting on the sidelines for now.
It has some consumer debt gone up a lot in the last six months.
Yeah, but we don't know if that's the debt of the forty percent or the sixty.
Yeah, right.
That question, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So part of the uh, the 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 unknowns is kind of how long can this consumer last, right? And so um inflation's a big unknown. Obviously, we we've started to trend in the right direction, but there's still a lot of variables. And so we don't think we're out of the woods yet with inflation. And right now where the stock market is, is trading at seventeen times. Uh, earnings or a P ratio of seventeen uh forward looking earnings, which isn't. It's been more expensive in the past few years, but that's also above the long term average. So we are um. Uh, neutral or cautious on the market. We had a rally in the past a couple of months. And so our expectation is that to the middle of next year, you can get sideways stock markets with with ups and downs along the way. And that'll sort of influence, you know, what we talked about when we get into the portfolios as well.
Yeah, what one thing I'll add to this, David, is if you look at this chart, um, you know, which of these scenarios play out is pretty much anybody's guess. And, you know, I think we're all very curious to see the CPI numbers as they come out. Uh, to hear Fed commentary on what their projections are for interest rate hikes, but the reality is nobody knows. Um, so. What do we know? Uh, we know where markets are currently priced. And if we look today, uh, this is a little bit dated, but the S and P five hundred today is almost four thousand. And we're showing a central scenario that's below uh four thousand clearly. So if. The base case plays out, we think the markets will be down by next June. Um, and obviously there's a downside scenario and a potential upside scenario there. So I would say today, in today's market, the S and P five hundred is not balanced for the upside versus downside risks. You can make the same case for Europe, given some of their challenges, certainly going through a winter with uh energy issues. And then if you look at the bond side of the equation, so if you go down and look at where it says US IG spread. Uh, that stands for investment grade. Those are high quality bonds. Um, so when spreads are positive from this point, that means bond prices go down. And when spreads are negative, that means bond prices go up. So what I would say today is higher quality or investment grade bonds. Look more reasonably priced for the environment, but high yield spreads, you could see here under the central scenario. We think spreads widen from here. Under the downside scenario, we think spreads widened quite a bit. And under the upside scenario, obviously, that means the economy is good. We would expect spreads to go down, but we think. High yield bonds are relatively unattractive, given the downside risk versus the upside potential. So. This is going to feed into some of our recommendations going forward. Um, but at the end of the day, I mean, you could. Hear from our tone and language uh that we're getting a little bit more defensive. Um, you know, our concerns are that. Given rate hikes, which tend to have a lag effect of anywhere from six to twelve months. We start to see economic deceleration as we go into next year and potential uh shifts on earnings downwards. Uh, and that would have negative implications for risk assets. Um, so we'll stop there and, you know, there any any questions about the markets in general?
Any more questions? Okay, we're good.
Janet, are you still having wage pressure in the city? Are you any anybody on the call still having wage pressure? With new employees or old employees? Just a question.
We can't actually, um, nobody wants to work for municipalities. Um, that's the real problem. Uh, it's just overall finding uh people to come work in different positions. Uh, you post a job and you maybe get one or two applicants and these are for high level jobs, not even, you know, clerical.
Wow.
And that seems to be happening across most industries that we deal with, so.
Yeah, I've talked to other towns and they're feeling the same pinch.
Yeah, I I'd say on average, the municipalities we're dealing with are short about twenty-five percent of staff at this point. I don't know if that's the same for New England.
We're about there. Yeah.
Okay, seems to be the norm.
Let me ask you a question. Where are people going or what are they doing then?
Um, we have some people, uh, it depends. I I can, I mean, a couple just wanted a life change. Um, somebody is teaching now instead of doing what they're doing. Another person went for a promotion. They did go to another municipality for the promotion. For police officers in that position, if you can get the ages of the years in, they're just retiring. They're saying, hey, I I don't need to work anymore. Um, it it's it's. It's a lot of different scenarios, not just one.
That's the question.
I meant more about like when people aren't applying, like you like, what are these folks doing in lieu of. Getting a job or do they just stay where they are or is something better out there? So I'd like to know personally.
Well, and I think it's too the 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 whole idea that the baby boomers now retiring, you're losing a huge number of people out of the workforce. That used to be there.
Right.
And trying to fill that has been difficult.
Thank you. It's great point. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Can you move on?
Okay.
Great. Can I just, can I just test my, uh, can anybody hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
Another civil Janet.
I just, I just had a thought. We used to talk about, uh. And and I'm going back thirty, forty years when I was in in college. We talked about one of the costs, reasons for inflation being, uh. What is it? Wage push, I think they called it. I'm just wondering if because of the of staffing shortages. Labor shortages everywhere, salaries come up a lot. That's going to add to inflation as well. As other inflationary pressures come down. I wonder if anybody's, anybody's thought of that or if that's not considered a valid concept anymore.
So Clark, I was in the same class at some point with wage pushing. So I I'll go one step further.
Yeah.
I'll I'll go one step further and we've discussed this with our CIO office because we have the pleasure of being with boards like this and talking. We're across the country. The odd thing that's happening now with the wage push inflation, it's not um geographically isolated. So if you think about that same class, when you took it, the minimum wage across the country may have been three dollars an hour. If you lived in Newington, Connecticut, you made more than somebody in Missoula, Montana or Freeburg, Missouri. Now with the minimum wage of fifteen dollars and the shortage of employees. Uh, if you work in the Target down the street from where your city hall is or your town hall, you're probably making twenty to twenty-two dollars an hour. As a fact, if I work at the Jiffy Lube in Missoula, Montana, Montana, I'm getting paid twenty-one dollars an hour and my cost of living is much less. In Freeburg, Missouri, where they make Quaker windows and you can look the company up, laborers coming out of prison are starting at nineteen seventy-five to twenty-two dollars an hour. So forgive me, but if I'm in a double wide in one of those two places living, I now can buy. Better detergent, better soap, because my local store may not have it. But I can buy it on Amazon or on the internet and have it delivered within two days. So the demand for certain items are going up. Take it to the extreme and you have somebody living in those places that dreamt of getting a Polaris ATV, let's say. They never can think about it. Now they can think about getting it and having it delivered. They don't have a dealership nearby. So the demand cycles for consumers are changing also, not just the wage push inflation, if that makes sense.
You say, yeah, sure. Thank you.
Okay. John, does that make sense? You usually would comment on that, so.
Yeah, it does. I was just gonna say you're also talking about demand poll now, so we might. Economy classes.
Yeah. Okay. I think that's my point, John.
We can, uh, we can get into, give you an update on the portfolio, uh, portfolio performance, go through some recommendations. Uh, starting with the police pension. Um, so the right now, the the allocations have a um. A slight overweight to equities versus the targets, about sixty-three, almost sixty-four percent in stocks. Compared to a sixty percent long term target. And when we dig in a little bit, we'll see that the stock piece has what we call overweights in the US part of the portfolio. Underweights to the international part of the portfolio, which you can kind of, the underweights are represented by the red. Those aren't losses. Those are just. Dollar differences to the target. And then, and then, of course, fixed income is an underweight as well. Uh, we also have within bonds, we have an overweight to the shorter term manager. So BlackRock and JP Morgan. Um, and then the longer term managers have underweights represented by these, the red over here. So that's the current positioning. Um, and we'll go through our recommendations. From a performance perspective. Uh, this page is through October thirty-first. And uh, for the quarter, the previous three months, the portfolio was down five point six, calendar year. Uh, down seventeen point four, little bit ahead of the benchmark. And if you think back to um. That first page we started on pretty much the same date. That was the end of October and the range of returns were down fifteen to down twenty-four. Now, since then, um, as through yesterday, this portfolio is down fourteen and a half. Okay, so. Um, it has improved in in a little over a month. And fiscal year to date is up three and a half. So since June thirtieth to yesterday is up three and a half. So. One of the um things what I mentioned was we have an overweight to stock. So we do, and and if you think about what we talked about in our cautious view. Going for, at least in the short term, um, we want to take advantage of the rally that we've had since October. Um, and take a little bit off the table. So we're recommending two percent out of stocks and putting it into bonds. Um, we have an outline of the recommendations, but um, that's kind of the the largest change uh across all the portfolios. Um, all the the pension and the OPEB would be um essentially that that recommendation.
Now, David, didn't last time we go from. And do the some of the moves that you sort of talked about, we went to short term bonds, out of bonds into equities. Um, and now we're reversing that, right? Some of that.
So, uh, yeah, so the the last um. Last, the last time, so it was two meetings ago, we we made a lot of changes.
Okay.
We replaced, we dismanager changes, we replaced Vanguard, uh, ClearBridge with Vanguard Growth. We um, what we ended up doing is we lowered uh the international allocation. We got rid of Oakmark and Euro Pacific. We replaced Euro Pacific with with um. This Vanguard Fund and we moved the Oakmark Funds up to MFS Value.
Yeah.
Um, and then lastly, we reduced the Western piece. But last time, that didn't shift the overall stock allocation. It just reshifted how the stocks and the bonds. Were made up within those allocations.
Okay.
Yeah, so we took out, um, if you look at Western, they have more in the credit space. They'll have more non-investment grade debt. So we fairly aggressively reduced that exposure. Um, that's one of the bigger underweights relative to the target that we have. Um, and then we've started to shift more, uh, which is a continuation of what we've done, uh, to value and away from growth. This time it was in the international space, so it reflects more of where we want to be in terms of styles, where we want to be in terms of quality. Um, and we're going to make some further shifts uh now, but we did not increase equities with that shift.
John, the equities actually went up in value because of the market action since the last meeting. So that's where the.
Okay.
Came from, so.
Yeah.
Turn that back more towards the original target.
Okay, yeah, because I remember us talking about maybe bumping up against the equity target last time and.
Yep, and we.
Concerned about that. Okay.
So now we are, we're up against it, so we want to pull it back again.
Okay.
So do we, do we want to take actions, recommendations, one at a time or in total at the end?
Yeah, so this would be for all of the portfolios, uh, all for portfolios. So, uh, David, I don't know if you want to go through everything first. Or do you want to just make one blanket recommendation?
I think, um, why why don't we, we put together an executive summary here to outline the 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 actual details, the recommendation, the rationale for everyone. So why don't we walk through this and then and then.
Okay.
The committee can decide if it's one at a time or all together. Um, but it's set up to be able to do all all together because, um, you know, they're the same percentage across all of them. So.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. So just to recap, so we we want to reduce our overweight to equities to be more defensive. So. We're suggesting um to do so by reducing stocks by two percent, more specifically. Taking from one and a half percent from the Ken Anderson Small Cap Manager and a half a percent from growth. And then that two percent would go to the DSAM Corp plus fixed income manager. So. These recommendations are specific for a few reasons. If we're looking to get defensive, if we go into recession. US large cap tends to do better than small cap. So right now we have a slight overweight to small cap. This would bring it back in line. Secondly, we do still prefer value to growth. And so, uh. While we already have an overweight to value, us an additional half a percent from Vanguard Growth. Would bring the growth index essentially in line to our long term target. And then lastly, putting it in this particular manager, in our opinion, if uh the Fed cuts rates. Because now they've gone too far and there's a recession, this manager would perform the best, right? Because it has the longest duration. We've already shortened up the overall duration of portfolio to be uh three and a half years. Right? And we're comfortable with that, but we don't want to get shorter. And we're almost at the point where we think there might be value to to extending the duration of the bond slightly, not anything major. So that's what this move would help accomplish. Um, that's the recommendation one.
Okay, just, just a quick question, David. Right now, the longer term T bills are much less than like the two year, right? So I just, my only question is, if inflation continues and they still have to raise rates, then. The longer term rates may go up if they think inflation is going to be around for a while. You know, we talked about. Uh, the wage push, you know, so if that all continues, this may not work. I I I'm not disagreeing with the strategy. I'm just sort of playing devil's advocate on this.
Yeah, so where where this wouldn't work, John, um, is if the economy regains strength. Uh, and that could be because China reopens and and maybe inflation comes down much quicker than anticipated. Uh, maybe some of the issues with Russia and Ukraine uh get resolved. Um, typically, the long end of the interest rate curve reflects expectations for growth. Uh, and the short. End of the curve is much more controlled by the Fed. Um, so, you know, if we do go into recession, what typically happens is the long end goes down. So.
Yeah.
You're right in the sense that if if our call is wrong, obviously, the long end will will struggle in here. But um, but this, this is our view in terms of what the economy could look like the next six months. Um, and but that's typically what happens during, you know, as the economy weakens, if you go into recession, you'll see longer term rates reflect a much weaker growth outlook.
Yeah, I I don't disagree because I've I've amazed at how much the bonds have come down and. I had a lot of balance funds that I really got killed on, so.
Yeah. So so, John, this is the advantage of our group having three different generations. One generation isn't on the call right now with us. Having lived through it, so we have these discussions internally. It was when I first started with business was the end of when the Fed chairman was a gentleman named Mr. Burns in nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen eighty. And he said he had beaten inflation at that point. And the next month, Mr. Volker took office. And the inflation that was supposedly beaten went up to seventeen percent over the next year and a half.
Yeah.
So I am going to say, and I've said this to the younger people I work with, that I think this Fed, especially Powell, is channeling his inner Volcker right now. And as you just said, potentially, they may not stop until the inflation really is stopped. But the bond vigilantes, the people that the bond market doesn't lie at any time in my career. The fact that we're inverted the way that we are, it would take a huge move of inflation up on a sustained basis. To move the long end of the curve at this point, because the bond market sees slower growth than most of the companies at this point.
Yeah, yeah, I just amaze how long the inflation has kept up where it is.
Great.
Okay. David, we'll move on to the next one. Does everybody understand what we just went through? Any questions on it, recommendation one?
No questions, right?
The second recommendation is to actually replace Western, remove Western Corp Plus from the portfolio and just also take those proceeds into the same manager, DSAM Corp Plus. Now, from a duration perspective, they're the same. So this would not contribute to lengthening the bonds. But from a credit perspective, they are different. Western has more high-yield exposure, more credit exposure. So if you think back to what Ashley went through with the, the, our outlook and how that translates into both the stock market and certain bond markets, this move would be increasing the quality of the bonds, reducing the risk of the bond portfolios. I just, Western has been in the portfolio for a while and has added value long-term. But in the short term, they are underperforming because of their credit exposure. And our opinion is, you know, rather than waiting for a rebound, which could take a while, depending on how the economy, the economy recovers or works through the next year, you know, we would prefer to de-risk and move away from them. And Ashley, do you, let me know if you want to add anything.
Yeah, this is just, again, keeping with the theme that on the fixed income side, you want to have higher quality, which means higher-rated bonds, less exposure to credit bonds, things like high yield, emerging market debt, preferreds, things that will respond negatively to an economy that's weakening. So, you know, again, we are just improving the quali, the quality a little bit. And keep in mind too, if we look at the stock market, which rallied quite a bit over the last month, credit spreads have come in again, which means that these bonds in the short term have actually rallied, which to us gives us an opportunity to improve the quality, not having to do it at the lowest point of the cycle. So again, this is just to improve the quality. What we have not had this year, which we believe we may have next year, is asset class diversification. So this year, as we talked ad nauseam at the beginning of the call, both bonds and stocks moved in the same direction, which was down. But historically, we tend to see fixed income serve as a pretty good diversification asset class when equities are performing poorly. And we would expect that relationship to actually reestablish itself if the economy weakens next year. But you'd want to have that higher exposure to the higher-quality bonds. So that's really the, the logic behind this suggestion.
Now, just going back to the portfolio, you know, Western is a small, smaller piece as well, right? So, so it's, these are, both of the recommendations are, are tactical moves. You know, they're not making major shifts in the allocation. Any questions on a recap or, or recommendations? Or should I, you know, does anybody need to see the, the executive summary again?
Anybody have any questions?
I can quickly just skip to this exact same page for each of the portfolios and you can compare. So here, we're in the municipal pension. So you can see that everything is very similar. So from a percentage standpoint, the recommendations hold for, for this, this portfolio as well. The administrative pension. Here, the only thing that made the major difference in the three portfolios is the cash flow. The percentage being taken out is slightly different each month. And then lastly is the OPEB, which, let me just find that one. So the OPEB is a similar but different, right? So it's the same makeup of the portfolio. And today, it has a, an allocation that is a little bit more conservative than the pensions. But that also changes over time. When the annual contribution comes in, in July or late, late July, early August, it gets invested in fixed income. This year, the two most conservative short-term fixed income managers, JP Morgan and BlackRock, and then gets taken out as Janet needs to pay claims. So, but the recommendations that we just, we just outlined also apply for the OPEB as well.
So just for the newer people, go on, John, sorry.
I was just going to ask, is it the same, are those same percentages that applied at OPEB too, or?
They do, yeah.
Okay.
And it just so happened that that was, you know, given the timing of the recommendation. That could have been different if this was six months from now or six months ago. But, but yes, they, they're actually very similar.
Okay, sorry, Mark.
Yes, and no, just for the newer members of Janet, correct me if I have it wrong, but this OPEB is structured basically as a pass-through, meaning that the city, the town makes a contribution of what the insurance premiums would be, plus some money. And during the year, it's up to Lockton and the town risk management to control the risk, which they've done a great job of. And whatever is not paid out stays in this portfolio. And you can see it's, it's grown very nicely since inception. So it's called a pass-through OPEB. And I'm going to say, in spite of being a pass-through OPEB, this is one of the better-funded OPEBs that we work with, okay? That we know, and I'm sure John can do a comparison of.
I agree.
Okay, so Janet's done a great job of risk management, locked in on the insurance side. So that's helped a lot with this. Janet, did I miss anything on that for the new members?
No, no, just as you talked, pass-through. And I think as, as Dave's mentioned before, I do put their question on a quarterly basis to reimburse the town for all our claims. So it's not every month, but every quarter. So we kind of have to have the cash flow working to, we have it available at that time.
Okay.
So now, I guess it, it would be time to, to make a motion here, this right here. This page kind of encapsulates both, all the recommendations from UBS today. Yep.
So first, do they want to make a motion for recommendation one and two?
Yeah, I moved that we take, take the recommendations from UBS, recommendations one and two.
For your second?
I was like, uh.
Any discussion? Get an all in favor? Opposed? Okay, recommendations, Carrie.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure this was part of the packet we sent over. So I'll forward this piece to you for your record, so you can get easier.
Perfect. I was just going to send you an email asking you to send me that. That's perfect. Thanks.
So the, if, if the committee has time, we did, did put together one more piece of our presentation. We had mentioned this at the last meeting, going over capital market assumptions and the expected rates of returns going forward.
Yeah, I got, the only thing I would mention, Tim, is I guess Mitch, you're, you're leaving at seven fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the only question would be, do we want to do the ordinance first and then come back to this? Because we need to, I think we need Mitch for the quorum, right?
And we need Mitch for the quorum, right?
Yeah, that's, I, I don't know if we do or not. I can't, I can't count because there's too many Janits on here.
I know, I think we have six here and we need five for a quorum.
Okay, so we, we can go. Okay, yeah, fine, perfect. Sorry, I wasn't sure.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, back to you, David.
Sure, so, so this is what's called an asset allocation study. We do this every few years, mainly you do it when, when you want to evaluate a major allocation shift as well as an actuarial assumption change or when the actual assumptions have changed. And so earlier this year, the assumptions did change from UBS because of the dramatic changes in both the stock market and the bond market with interest rates going up. So what we have on the screen here is, this report is the, it's not done in the same way. An actuary picks an actuarial rate, but it's our version of the closest representation of a long-term, multiple-market-cycle expectation.
So David, I would just throw in, when Becky Seelman does the actuarial assumption, she takes our information in plus other firms, including their own assumptions, capital market assumptions, and comes up with a number that is based on a lot of different firms. This is UBS's view of what the world will look like over the next thirty years in investing, twenty to thirty years. Okay.
So we have our, yep, we have our long-term target here. That's represented in the base case there, the sixty-forty stock-to-bond allocation. And then we just put two alternatives so you can, you know, understand what getting more aggressive or more conservative represents long-term. So in any given year, the expected rate of return here is six point four nine percent with a standard deviation, or that's what, how we measure risk of nine point eight nine. Now, if we wanted to say, okay, let's get more aggressive and do ten percent more in stocks all the way to the right, that would bump you up another half a percent per year with, with eleven point three percent, three-six percent standard deviation. Now, the last row on here is useful. This, this is a ratio that essentially defines how much unit of return do you get per unit of risk? So put another way is, is the risk worth the reward? And the higher the number, the, the, the better that trade-off is. And so what this is saying is if you wanted to get that extra half a percent to go, you know, to get up to seven percent, the amount of risk-taking to do so isn't necessarily the greatest trade-off because your Sharpe ratio goes from point six two to point five nine. If you wanted to get more conservative, it's actually a decent trade-off. And this is the first time these numbers have, have borne out like this because of now interest rates being higher and going back to the whole Tina, there is no alternative versus now there is a real alternative with interest rates being where they are. So this is, to us, helps confirm that your current long-term actuarial rate of, a return of six and a quarter is, is a reasonable rate. Also, these numbers do not take into account any sort of outperformance potentially or underperformance, but from managers or tactical allocations and things that we do, you know, on a quarterly basis. So there's one more piece of this that we want to show that, to take it a step further. And that's, that six point four nine percent was in any given year, right? So the average return in any given year would be, that's the expectation with a wide range of outcomes, right? So the wide ranges in any given year, the best case could be twenty-seven percent. Worst case is down eleven point five percent, right? So that's kind of, you know, looking at statistics and, and taking kind of probabilities. As we go out farther, in any given five years, the average return actually goes down to six point one three percent. But the range of outcomes narrows. So the chances of losing money in a worst-case scenario in ten years becomes very, very low. Now, that doesn't help because your actuarial rate of return still needs to be hit for, you know, to, to maintain, maintain and grow the funding ratio. But, but this does show that over, over time, the long-term averages will narrow, narrow the outcomes with higher probability of getting to the six-plus percent.
But this says for, is that thirty years? For thirty years, it's six oh six, which is under our six point two five.
Right. Yeah, so that, so this is, yeah, this, this is actually twenty years, right?
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and the other difference though is, and this is where, you know, comparing an actuarial rate of return to these assumptions is not apples to apples. We're attempting to do long-term projections, but the reality is now to twenty years, UBS is going to update their capital market assumptions many times.
Yeah.
For the new environment. And that's, that, this is, this happened this past March. So, you know, this is meant to help guide you. But it's, this is certainly a lot more dynamic and changes compared to actuarial rates typically.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not that far off.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Clark.
I'm sorry, I cannot remember your name. I am so sorry.
David?
David, yeah, okay. I'm really sorry. I just see Janet Murphy and I blew your name out of my mind. Sorry for expressing myself poorly. I'm still a little foggy. Did, did I understand that, that our, our current discount rate for the purposes of funding ratio is a six point two five?
Yes.
Okay, I've been a little, does that mean that I should worry less about the funding ratio of the police pension plan?
Well, if you think the six point two five is achievable, yes.
Okay. I, I don't, I.
We should, I think you should worry less, Clark, because it's six point two five instead of six point, whatever it was. Six point seven five, we're going, we're going down, but we, we sort of stopped. So yeah, it's less discounting. There should, we have those, the market results have been pretty poor, right? So our, our portfolios come down a lot in the last year.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I wanted to speak to Tim and others privately, you know, without everybody else being present, about what I always felt was our obligation to report to the town council, what the funding ratio was and how we felt about it.
Yeah.
And it's a hobby horse, by the way, folks, that, that John and I share, maybe some others. And Tim, I left your position feeling like I had failed entirely in our obligation to.
Well, yeah, only Clark going over to new ordinance that has some of that in there, where we're supposed to report to the town council at least every couple of years to say what we think.
I'm glad, I'm glad to know that. Thank you. Okay.
But we haven't approved ordinance yet, so we may not stay that way.
Okay.
That's next.
Thank you. I won't forget your name again, I promise.
No problem.
I've just got a real quick question on the, on the basis for the projections. And if I missed this, or it's been, everybody else knows and I don't, I apologize. But are these just based on, like, historical performances of the, of the mixes? Is there all kinds of other considerations thrown into a UBS algorithm? Like, how is this developed?
Yeah, so I could, I could take that, David. David, turn to page four of twenty. So what UBS does is they start with what have these asset classes returned historically? And then they make projections based on what they expect for economic growth, inflation. Where starting interest rates are and where they're going. And they make projections or capital market assumptions for returns for various asset classes based on their view of what the future is going to look like. So to give you an idea, they're assuming that cash is going to return about two point one six percent on average going forward. Obviously, if we buy a three-month T-bill today, we can get about four percent, a little bit over four percent. So this is understating what current cash is. If we looked at this last year, we'd probably overstate what cash was, but this is an expectation over time. On the fixed income side, if we look historically where yields have been on bonds, they've historically been higher than three point six percent, although the last five years, it hasn't been the case. Today, bonds are yielding about four point four percent in this index. So UBS is projecting that yields are going to come down over the coming years. And then in terms of expectations for equity returns, if you look at the Russell one thousand, that's a US-based index. They're assuming eight point two percent on average, which is about where we've been over the very long term historically. So if you look at the fact that we've just been through a fairly significant sell-off, I would say today, these numbers are probably more reasonable than had we had these numbers last year at the valuations that we did. But the expectation is that large-cap US stocks are going to underperform US mid- and small-cap stocks. And that the international markets going forward are going to outperform the US market. So it's part based on history, but a lot of it is where we are today in terms of valuation, in terms of inflation, interest rates, expectations for growth, et cetera.
Thank you.
Sure.
Clark, did you have another question? I see your hands up, Clark. Do you have another question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, I didn't mean to.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. I didn't want to miss you.
No, thank you.
So, so David, just a question then, would you recommend us changing asset, David, Ashley, or Mark, whoever? Would you recommend us changing asset allocation based on this or stay at the sixty-forty?
So, so right now, we, this is our tactical move. We're recommending staying a little more conservative today because of our short-term views. Going forward, one of the discussions we're having is at what point do international markets? Going forward, one of the discussions we're having is at what point do international markets properly price in some of the risks? Uh, and so we may be coming back depending on what happens over the next few months with a suggestion to increase the international side, which we've been significantly underweight, uh, which has been a positive for us. But, um, you know, in terms of valuations, if we look at where we're starting relative to earnings versus where those markets have been historically, and we compare that against where we are today in the US, the non-US markets are starting to look more attractive from a valuation perspective only. We still need the fundamentals to improve. So, uh, should that occur, we may be making a shift to add more to those international markets to get closer to target.
Yep. Okay. Based on that, based on this, you want to recommend us going from the sixty forty base case to the seventy thirty? Cause it's more risk for a slightly more return, right?
Yeah, at the moment, correct.
Yes.
Okay.
But if that changes, you come back to this recommendation, I assume.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Any other questions?
And Janet, we're going to get a copy of all this too, because I, I guess I'd like to look at it for my own portfolio.
Sure, I can send that to you tomorrow.
Okay, because I'm, I'm too, I'm well overweight in international.
Most, most of the street has been, yeah, most of the street, John, has been overweight international. We have not been on purpose, so, so.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't bail today, probably.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Don't jump ship now.
Yeah. May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Am I, am I the only one who didn't receive any of this material in advance?
No, nobody has. Janet just got it on Friday.
Yeah, nobody received. Did I got it on Friday and I'm going to send it out all to you tomorrow? So you can have a review afterwards.
Both with the, with the, um, employee benefits and the, and we used to get these many days in advance and I need many days in advance to study.
Yeah, I, I got both the presentations on Friday and I wasn't in on Friday, unfortunately, so.
Well.
I will definitely send them out to you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, make it a note regardless of the, you know, uh, to, to get it out, um, sooner than a few days before. We can get it by Tuesday or Wednesday of the preceding week instead of
Yeah, that'd be helpful then.
Okay, then I could ample time to get it out. Okay, would that help?
That would be great.
Yeah, then I hope we can get it headed way ahead. Yeah.
Yep, definitely.
We'll have a longer meeting next time, but.
True.
Okay.
Nothing wrong with a longer meeting for getting something done.
Any other information or things you want us to present going forward?
That's six good draws between.
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, thank you, everybody, and have a great holiday season and get a good one.
Yeah, you too.
And we'll be done with this dog year, economic year in a few weeks.
Yeah, right, move into another year.
Yeah.
Can't be any worse.
Uh, don't bet on it. Forever the pessimist.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
All right, take care, everyone.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we still have our agenda, old business, uh, the ordinance recommendations. Uh, this is, these were made by you, John, right?
Yeah, I just put it together because when I first got on this committee eight years ago, Clark, so that when you guys convinced me to be on this committee? Or maybe even longer than that, uh, when I applied for the committee at work, I, I put down that, well, you know, in this committee, we actually uh, vote on the recommendations of investments. And I said, doesn't say that in an ordinance. So how are you guys doing now when it doesn't say that in ordinance? So at that point in time, I started bringing up the point and I, I looked at the West Hartford ordinance and decided to rewrite it a little bit because it was kind of weird. The only thing it said on the pension, it grouped the pension and employee benefits together, which essentially said, the only thing, only, our only responsibility was is to get a new agent of record every three years. So it never said any of that about, you know, the alloc, asset allocation. You know, and now UBS has put in the new policy for, um, that investment policy for us that we review every year or two. So I just tried to split it out so that the employee insurance piece of it, I pretty much left the same. And then I just split out and sort of tried to come up with what I thought the pension piece of it, what we should be doing.
So there's no changes then to the first page, what it is currently?
You look at it and I think there's one because I take out the pension piece of it.
Okay.
Yeah, you do that twice.
Yeah. So I, I think it's mainly because, you know, there's really not that, you can see the, I think Janet gave it to you and change mode or whatever. So, yeah, you can just say wherever there's a red, a red line, I've done some changes. So really.
On the insurance side, do we actually do this?
Yeah.
Like the agents, I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think I've come up on a
No. Yeah, well, we did, we did it for three years. We just, we just redid Lockton like two years ago, right, Janet, something like that?
Actually, Lockton's do, um, probably two thousand twenty-four, I believe it's still.
Okay.
Recently did theirs. I can't remember if it's three or five years. I was looking at that thinking it was, it was soon, but it wasn't.
Yeah. So, yeah, that we, we've, we've done it before and we actually had three or four people present to us and then we voted on who we thought should be the right ones. So we have done that. Uh, I think the other stuff is, you know, pretty much we, we just listen to what Lockton tells us every quarter and and then vote on if they recommend any changes. So I, I really haven't changed that at all other than to take the pension piece out. And then I put the whole section in, the whole section for functions for employee pension benefits is all brand new.
So that eight, eight dash three seven is brand new?
Eight dash three eights, brand new.
Three, I'm sorry, three eight, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then, then there's little boxes in there where I put some comments in, to, to, to see if we wanted to discuss them or not.
Yeah, maybe, John, maybe we should take them one at a time.
Yeah, yeah, let's go, let's go down through it. Let's talk about the function.
Probably be easier.
Yeah, so, you know, essentially it says a lot of the same, same stuff as the employee insurance. So for eight, three eight dash A, it just determines needs and specifications for employee pension benefit program. The second one that's kind of new is, you know, to provide by trust agreement for the corporate fiduciaries. But we never talk about selecting the investment advisor anywhere in here. So it's unlike, it's unlike the other piece where we select a new employee benefits person every few years. This doesn't have that in there. And I, Janet, we changed to UBS maybe twenty years ago now or fifteen years ago?
Well, fifteen, I think it was somewhere between fifteen and twenty and I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I remember a couple of years ago, they said, well, we've been on an account for like fourteen years. So it's probably like fifteen or sixteen years. So I, I didn't know if we thought we needed that in here. Because right now we don't have that. Uh, you know, at any time, I think we can change the the investment advisor, but this doesn't have like a, an ongoing thing where we, we look at changing the investment advisor. And I think it's because there's more, you want more of a long-term focus on them rather than, you know, a shorter term focus, you know, health claims pay out after fifteen months. So you're, you're sort of done with the health claim after fifteen months. We're here, we're trying to talk about thirty years. So you, I don't think you'd want to change your investment advisor every year.
No, typically towns don't do that. You, you want to keep a long-term relationship. Um, and, and I, I think as you said, if you see something going wrong, that's gives an opportunity to any time you guys can go and ask to go out to RFP for us to get another, um, advisor.
Right, so we can do that anytime anyway, right?
Yes.
Well, I, I'm not sure. We don't address that in here, so I, I guess we could do that, but we don't.
If you want to add something like that, you, you could. I mean, because you guys are evaluating their performance. So if you felt
That's, that's probably in the individual, that's in the individual contract. So like termination clauses and everything, it probably doesn't need to be in here, does it?
No, no, it's just your right to go out to RFP to select, uh, another advisor.
Well, I think it may be, it may be covered under G because we talk about evaluating the corporate fiduciaries and actuary every couple of years. So at least we evaluate them and I think at that point in time, we can decide if we want to go to RFP.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're okay with B then. C is, you know, essentially what we did today, right? Quarterly basis, we, we hear the performance and if necessary, take action on an investment advice of the corporate fiduciary. So now we're already doing. D is, uh, a- as they mentioned, it's included in our, our investment policy, we're supposed to periodically review the asset allocation. So we did a little, we did a little bit that today. I don't know if we want to, I put in every two years. I don't know if we want to do it annually. I think last time on the phone, David and Ashley recommended that we review the investment policy and asset allocation annually. I feel okay with not less than two years because I'm not sure we always get to this stuff, so.
Right, and, and it changes, so it could change, you know, from month to month, so.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking, for, for what it's worth, I was thinking, you know, biannually, because often don't the commissioners change with the change of the council?
Yes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, you know, uh, biannually.
That makes sense. Yeah, and then I guess the question, then, sorry, we're on to the, oh, so E is just review the statement of investment policy. So that they, that UBS came up with a statement of investment policy, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, Janet, I think. And we agreed on that. And then, um, you know, they, they recommended in a meeting, I'm not sure if the last one or the one before, that, that we should review that again because it'd been over a year. But I just thought, you know, it should be in here that we should review that.
We did agree to it and they had it up a couple of years ago. And at the last meeting, they did just kind of review where it was right now for all the new members so they could see it. That meeting or the meeting before that, but they have recently gone over it with us.
Yeah, we've gone over it. The question is, do we, how often do we need to review? And I think biannually is often enough. I, uh, your investment policy should be flexible enough that you don't need to change it every year.
I agree.
Okay. Um, and then the question is, how often do we have the actuary come and present to us, I guess? Some, some years we seem to do it every year, but that's, I sort of left it open by, you know, at least biannually when they come in.
I think it's really important, John.
Yeah, so why you think we should do it annually then, Clark?
I, I, I think so.
Okay.
I, I, I just found it's such a critical piece of, of the financing of the town.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
That, that, um, I think it's important that, that, uh, that people understand. And I, I, I don't think I, I, my feeling in the past is that the, 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 the people who had to make the ultimate decisions, most of them did not understand how the funding worked and what it meant and how serious the residency can be.
Yeah.
And I, 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 learning, learning, and learning of, I think it's unless there is too costly to do.
Well, I, I, you know, we get the reports annually, so I
Yeah, it's just no extra cost. It wouldn't be, I don't think, right?
Well, yeah, I don't think Becky would have an issue just coming, an actuary to have an issue coming in and presenting to us. Because she does it annually to West Hartford. I, I don't know.
There's no, there would be no extra cost for her to come in and speak to you guys.
Okay, so I think we'll change, we'll change that to annual.
Which number was that?
That's F.
I would like to. Also want to remind, remind people or let people know that we, we asked her to, uh, address the council once.
Yeah, we did that once and I, I guess one of the comments I had on there, Clark, was, you know, should we, should we as a, a committee make uh, recommendations on assumptions to the town manager or the town council? Um, because right now it seems like we talk about it and then the town manager makes a decision.
No, no.
And I don't know how much input we have with the town manager, but that's, that's an open question for me if we should do that or not. I, I sort of feel we, we should make recommendations. The town manager can just say no. But I think
Yeah.
Us as a committee should make the recommendations.
Oh, I agree. No, I just wanted to point out that that's how seriously we're trying to take it in the past.
Right, right.
But I wouldn't recommend that we have her do that again, but certainly I think we need to, we, we should meet with her once a year and then
Yeah, okay. So under F, we'll meet for once a year and then maybe we'll add a G that says we make recommendations on the the actual, I don't know, actual assumptions or, yeah, I guess actual assumptions to the town manager.
No, yeah.
Is that okay with everybody?
It's up to them to decide whether or not to accept the recommendations. But I think it would be important for this committee to know where we stand, even if the town doesn't follow our recommendations.
Right, right. I, I don't, I don't disagree, but we, we've, the tenant historically may not do that.
Oh, I know.
So we make the recommendations to town manager annually?
Yeah, I think so. After we see the actuaries report, right? If that's okay. And we all, we'd only make it if we thought there should be a change, you know, if the actuary
Can we see something?
Right, right. If there's no change, we do something. Right.
Okay.
I mean, if they, you know, if they want to lower the discount rate from six point two five to five point five, or to raise it from six point two five back up to seven or something, uh, then we could really, you know, we can, we can show them the, the true impact of that on future.
Yeah. I, I think a big discussion
That is an extreme example.
Yeah, well, I, I think a big discussion we're going to have this year, Clark, is last year, six thirty twenty-one, they went to market value in doing the pensions. This year, I think, uh, yeah, Becky's going to suggest going back to actuarial value, which is a smooth value because the market's down.
Right.
And which she's already recommended to the West Hartford Pension Bureau, uh, Pension Committee. Um, so I, 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 I want to understand her logic behind that of saying last time it's okay to go to market value when it's high and now because it's low, we're going to go to a smooth value, which smoothes, smoothes it over five years. I, I want to understand how, how she feels comfortable with that and how we can feel comfortable with that.
I, I, I'm more interested in what, what she, why she recommended market value last year.
Uh, I think she had a lot of pressure from a lot of the town councils and pension committees to go to market value because market was up twenty percent or something.
Yeah.
You know, so it made the answer lower. And you got to remember, West Hartford borrowed three hundred and twenty million dollars to fully fund their pension. This no longer fully funded because the markets come down fifteen percent. So they're going to have, they're going to have an interesting conversation this year, I think. As we will, but it's, we, we didn't borrow three hundred and twenty million just to lose twenty percent.
We didn't borrow the money to do it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So. But, okay, so, uh, so I, yeah, I, I, I guess what we'll do is we'll change, we'll change the biannual on F to annual and then we'll add a comment that says we'll make recommendations to the town manager as necessary on assumptions or something?
Yeah. It may not be necessary, yeah.
Right, okay, so we'll make that change. And then we already talked about G, which is evaluate the performance of the fiduciaries and uh, consulting actuary now less than every couple of years, which I think may just be a discussion among us. It says, do we think they're doing an okay job or not?
Right, right. Do we want to put a, a, a comment in here then, then make, make any changes as finance? I mean, I don't want to be changing these people every, you know, every, every committee either, because it, that just doesn't get anywhere either.
No, and I, I think we have contracts with them, so we can't change all the time. And then this just says evaluate the performance. It doesn't say come up with a new fiduciary. I think this only allows us the prompt action that says, well, maybe we should look at somebody else, right? That's why I left it as
Okay.
As non-committal as I could.
Well, yeah, we don't want to tire ourselves down to something either.
Yeah, no, and I, I, I don't agree with that. I don't disagree. I think every once in a while, though, we should have a discussion if we're comfortable with what UBS is doing, what elements do.
Yeah, okay. So that was Because we never really do, we just take their reports.
Right. And now that, now it's all important of doing that. Now this one, let, next one may be more contentious because this says And now that, now it's all pouring into doing that. Now this one, let next one may be more contentious because it says. The committee's going to report to the council. On our opinion every, at least every three years about the actual value, valuation and the liabilities and blah, blah, blah. So that would be you, Tim. So I'm not sure you want to do that. But I, I think, I think we, we should. I, I do a lot of that. As you can see, I, you know, I send a lot of stuff to the town council and you guys.
Right. No, I appreciate that.
What I think's going on, but I think it should be a little more formal. It's kind of where I, again, I go back to West Hartford. They have a pension board that actually makes the recommendations to the town council. Um, so they're a lot more into it. And I think some of those guys actually maybe, I don't think they're paid. They're just volunteered, but. Um, you know, so they have a lot more formal process where the pension board's a lot. More involved in making decisions than we currently are.
And we aren't, right?
Yeah. Which I'm glad. Which I'm glad I wasn't one of them and borrowed, decided to borrow three hundred and twenty million dollars, but.
Yeah. Holy crap.
Yeah. Yeah. And now they got to pay it back, right?
Yeah, right. It's real good. I did, I, I was a little, you know, during this pension and benefit committee, I was, I'm surprised at just how little. Influence this committee has or even like charge. It does seem like a lot of times we're. Just listening to folks and then moving on. I think UBS has done a great job of giving good insight and. Managing through some challenging situations, but, uh, I was surprised that we just see more of a listening body than, than one of action.
Yeah. And I, I think to be fair, o- over the history, we've sort of pushed fairly hard on, on Milliman to lower the long-term rates. It's taken a while to get that to happen and it's taken a while to get convinced town management that it should happen. Um, but I, I think, you know, Clark and I have been into this for a while, trying to get them to have lower rates and. I, I actually. Made a motion a couple of years ago to said, we should do our investment rate should be six percent. The committee, I thought, did, wouldn't even. Uh, move it. So because they said the town couldn't afford it. Um, and I didn't think that was our place to decide on what the town could afford. Our place was to decide on what the right answer was. But I lost that argument. So I'm not going to fight that battle, especially since we're now at six and a quarter, which I. I don't feel great about, but I don't feel terrible about either. So I guess, I guess, Tim, this one's sort of to you. If you feel comfortable that. You know, we can re, we should report to the council every three years. Um, or should we have Becky go to the council every three years? My only concern. Sometimes Milliman's a little, you know, they're trying to support their answer and feel comfortable with their answer and. Um, I'm not sure they're going to get as much. I'm not going to say honesty, but much. Insight or whatever feelings we have about it from Milliman.
Well, I guess the question is who reports, you know, who's going to report this to the council every three years? Is it, I mean, the committee or I? I kind of like somebody.
Committee or some representative of the committee, right? So it's either going to be you or Mayor, Mayor Clark, I would guess, or somebody else.
Well, it's, it's not going to be me because I'm probably the least qualified person on this committee. You know, I. I hire somebody to handle my finances because I don't understand them.
We'll give you the slides and talking points, Tim.
Yeah, there you go. I'll, I'll look more like a fool than I usually do at a council meeting.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I think we could. You know, it could be one of us. It could, we, if we decide we want the actuary to do it, we could have the actuary do it.
Yeah. And I think maybe, or, or maybe a combination of, of one of us and then the actuary, um, would, would, would not be a bad idea.
Yeah. Okay. So I, maybe we can leave it this way and then we just have to decide on. You know, what it entails. This just sort of says we do it.
We do it. It doesn't say, yeah, we can, we can figure out the, the mechanics of how to do, how we do it.
Right. Okay.
You know, we actually get ready to make the, you know. It's, I think that's the question is who, who does it and, you know?
Right. But this just says we do it. It doesn't say who does it. So that leaves it open.
Okay.
Uh. Well, this is kind of weird. I think, I think we got to change it because this annual report then it says at least every three years.
Yeah, I was going to bring it up.
I think, I think we got to change it to report to the council, the financial condition of plan at least every three years. Because originally, I, I stole that from West Hartford and they do it annually, but. I, I think I decided to change it at least every three years. So if we just cross out the word annually, I think we're okay then.
That makes sense. Because if you, and every year would, you know, it fluctuates. So. The report last year or two years ago would be different than the report this year and, and.
Yeah.
You know, the up and down is, is the problem sometimes.
Yeah. No, I don't disagree. Okay. I think that'd be cool if we, so if we cross out the annually. And just say report to the council every, at least every three years.
Okay.
Janet, you got all those amendments?
Uh, yeah, sure, sure.
I can just do it. I'll, I'll do them and send you a copy of it, but.
Yeah, so there's a copy. Or send Janet a copy to you and send that out.
Yeah, send me a copy, but I think we have to, you guys have to vote, uh, if you're on agreement to send this to the council. As the changes that, uh, you guys just all agreed on.
Right. She's going to have to go to the council. It's a, it's just a, an ordinance. So it'd have to go to the council for two, two meetings at a public hearing, I believe.
Yes.
Oh, even for an ordinance that has to do that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I thought change in orange or easier, but.
No.
Well, it is, it is easier than changing the charter, but it's not as easy as changing.
Well, I don't know. The charter just got, charter just got changed. How hard could it be?
Yeah, right. Yeah. How hard did that be? It took, that took months and months and months and months and months.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
John, John, I wanted to ask you about eight thirty-six, number five. B five. Yeah, B five.
Eight thirty-six, B five, yep.
Yep. You said annually and you, you asked a question in the sidebar. Should we do it biannually and, or biannually? And, uh, I think we should do it biannually.
Okay.
So make that.
Yeah.
Today, you made every two years instead of every year.
Yeah, right. Okay. All right. I'll make that change to them.
So you make the changes in the next meeting, we. Somebody makes a motion and then we vote on it and then it goes to the council for two sessions. Is, is that the process?
Sounds like.
You have to go to the council. To have us consider it. We'd have to schedule a public hearing, have a public hearing and then the council can act on it that same night. Um, usually our public hearings are like, public hearing may start at six thirty, the council meeting starts at seven. So once the public weighs in on it, then the council can vote on it. But it's got to be two, it's two, two meeting process and a public hearing in the middle.
I see. Okay.
But that's been, that, that's only a matter of a couple of, it can be done, that can be done within four weeks.
All right.
Which seems like a long time, but not in, not in council speak, that four weeks is pretty quick.
Well, it's not a long time considering we've been talking about this on the committee.
Correct. You're right, Clark.
Now, I think it's important, Tim. I hope you don't feel like, uh. Uh, like we're trying to make life more complicated for everybody. Well, not me, John. But I, I have to agree. I think it's important to, to, um.
Well, I think we should, we should have this, you know. Because we don't really do much with the, 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 um. The pension side. We do the other, the interest we is.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's pretty regulated. The pension side is not as, 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 uh. Spelled out as were.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was thinking. That's why I thought it should be biannually.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. So can you make those changes and get them, Janet, and get them off the rest of us? And then we'll consider the next, at our next meeting, when our next meeting, Janet?
That's on the agenda for you guys to decide when your next meeting.
I'm sorry. I have a little trouble seeing here. I have a slight eye infection. So reading is not my, my strong suit here. So our next meeting, we, you want to meet in January to, to go over these changes?
Well, I was thinking maybe February to give the actuaries definitely a chance to get our report to us. Because I wanted to have the actuaries at the next meeting. What we're shooting for.
That sounds, it's good for me. That we'd have, we'd have to report to me a little once. I've got a big trip in the middle of February, but I guess we can pick a time. Obviously, there's something that works for most people.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of town sixteenth to the twenty-second myself. So.
Maybe we, maybe we look.
Would you ever want to go to a nicer place? Well, I'll join you and have the meeting there.
Um, I'm going to Aruba at the beginning of January, February rather, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm going no place, so.
February's not looking good.
So, so Janet, could we maybe get it the last week of January?
They typically don't have my report to me by then. I usually do get it in February. I can ask them. But I'm thinking maybe how does everybody feel about the first Monday in March?
That would work. That would be.
March sixth, right?
March sixth.
Yeah. How does that fit in with the budget cycle though, Janet?
We have just given the budget to the council by then.
Okay.
But that number is always floating because we don't have the report. So typically we're just putting an estimate in there that they give us at that point.
Okay.
As a placeholder.
Yeah. Yeah. Because we have all the issues where, you know, we do have the issue of market value versus actuarial value and the pension. So. Could be a little bit longer than normal. And I just, I'm just worried about the budget process.
And just so you know, we've had our person that has been doing our reports to us change twice over the last three years. So Becky doesn't actually do our work for us. She has somebody below her and I'm, I'm on, uh, this person who's doing it now is, this is the first year he's put it together for me.
Yep.
So you want to shoot for six.
You want to shoot for six o'clock on the sixth? Okay.
I'm good with that.
That works. Six good for everybody?
Yeah. Okay. Put it in the calendar. So I'm set, set.
Do you know?
All right, Tim, you, you went over, we skipped over remarks by committee members. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We got right onto the date of our next meeting.
Does any committee, team members have any remarks?
I just wanted to thank John for, uh. For helping, uh. With the revision to the, uh. I'm sorry, what is it called?
Orness.
To the ordinance and, and Tim for accepting it. I think it's, I think it's very important that we do this. And for everybody being open to it. And Tim, I, I will be perfectly happy to, uh. Be the person at the public hearing to express support. I'd like to express support for something, for a change.
Yeah. There you go.
There.
Can jump in on this. Yeah, I, I don't see this, this real, the changes, they're, they're not really. I mean, they're, they're substantive, so substantive, but they're not, you know, not earth shattering.
Right, right. I don't think.
And I think, and I don't see, I don't see the council having any major objection to it.
Well, and especially since it was never cut, you know, we didn't really ever cover the pension benefit piece of it. You know, I, I think it was pretty.
It seemed like that we just, somebody, whoever wrote the ordinance. Whoever wrote it originally probably just got, got tired by that point, just left it, you know, just kind of just.
I, I think it's very similar to the standing insurance committee, which only does insurance piece of it. So I think they took that. Applied it to employee insurance and didn't really think about what happened on the pension.
That makes sense too. That does make sense.
I'm guessing that's what happened.
Yeah, it makes sense. Okay. Okay. Now, if I don't skip over any more things on the agenda, the next item is number nine for adjournment.
I'll motion.
So here's a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you all. We're, we're adjourned.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good holiday.
Good night.
Have a good evening and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Good night.